Good morning, colleagues. Iminetran Techetin Aleja Zutun Guahan is back in session. We're continuing today on the second reading file. It looks like we are one short of a quorum, so we're going to wait for one more person to arrive. So we'll be on recess until that quorum is here.
We're back from a short recess. Want to first thank my colleagues for being here and making quorum so we can proceed with the people's business. And we're still in the second reading file. We're now in Bill 184-37. Speaker Turahi, you're recognized.
Manana Sizilus, colleagues, and I'd like to move to place Bill Number 184-37 COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. This was introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagen-Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. It is an act to authorize the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to sell or lease lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, and 2457-1 in the municipality of Baragada to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as a site of a new medical complex. And to move that this bill we place into the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on that motion.
Please proceed.
In 2019, the legislature passed a law authorizing the financing and construction of a hospital on government of Guam land. The governor's team decided no government of Guam land was acceptable and pursued federal land, Eagles Field, and when the AG did not approve the lease, the administration changed courts. And they are now pursuing lands from the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission Land Bank. These lands are reserved to compensate those landowners whose property was returned by the United States but would not be returned to landowners because it was kept for government of Guam uses. Currently, those landowners include the Tezen Airport lands and the Baragada lands used for National Guard facilities, potentially includes USO or other lands that are currently in the process of being returned. Bill 184 would authorize the lease of 61 acres from the land bank be negotiated between the governor and the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. As of today, neither the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission or the Department of Public Works has an appraisal or any even solicited an appraisal for this property. The bill proposes a sale. The original bill proposed a sale or lease of the Adakau Crown Edda Agagat property. This is on the back road to Anderson on Route 15. This is outside of the statutory process already authorized through the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to lease property up to five years. Passage of the bill as introduced would bypass legislative review of the lease or sale terms and any financial or in-kind commitments binding the people of Guam for potential federal funding on this property, and would waive any further review of the use of this property by the legislature. All negotiations for sale or lease terms would be between the governor and the Ancestral Lands Commission. Sale of the property out of the inventory removes the Ancestral Lands Commission's ability to further generate revenue for the land bank beneficiaries from that property. Sell would be final, and according to testimony, there are currently 3,000 lots whose owners have to be compensated. And thus, it was unlikely that the sale amount would be sufficient to compensate land bank beneficiaries for their loss. The appraisal that Ancestral Lands had submitted to BBMR was not a -- I don't think it was a formal appraisal, but their estimate was $6 million in possible revenues for that land. The committee amended the bill to require legislative approval of lease terms longer than 50 years or for a sale. The governor advised in discussions on this bill that if federal funding should be available, it will be available regardless of the location of the medical complex. There are no documents submitted to the committee or in the Matrix study which evidence federal funding towards a hospital complex. Matrix estimates that the infrastructure upgrades for this Adakau Crown property on Route 15 or the back road to Anderson would cost $100 million and would require the construction of a six-lane highway and traffic signals that would take two to three years. Corresponding utility infrastructure would take one year for design and two years of construction for a GPA power substation. GWA recommended a new water storage tank for sufficient pressure, a water pump and well, and upgrades to wastewater. Electricity and transportation infrastructure upgrades must occur before the campus's development according to Matrix. The bill does not specify funding for the infrastructure, however, the governor confirmed verbally to us that the ARP money would be used for infrastructure. The committee does not have confirmation of the use of those funds, or that is an allowable use under ARP, but that's the governor's representation. Just in contrast, the Matrix also did an estimate for EPAU, which for infrastructure upgrades, which would cost $20 million versus the $100 million proposed for this property. According to the medical campus plan prepared by Matrix, construction costs are the highest for this property, this Adakau property, over Eagles Field and over EPAU Point. The medical campus plan states that the estimated cost of developing the new hospital-related medical facilities and the required infrastructure is between $800 million and $1 billion. That's just for the hospital and related medical facilities. Not necessarily, we could not confirm whether that cost estimate also includes a veterans' administration facility, public health, behavioral health, or assisted living facilities, or the other things on the design. The Department of Public Health and Social Services confirmed during hearings on this bill that they are securing a site in Magnilau for the CDC lab. In 2020, the Army Corps of Engineers estimated the cost of a new hospital would be $743 million, not including the cost of land or transfers or upgrades to infrastructure. The Department of Public Health testified in the hearings on this bill that there will be no community health center at the proposed medical complex, only offices for the department. Bill Number 184 was introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagen-Guahan. There were four separate hearings held on this bill by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. Those proceedings have been recorded, transcribed, and presented in the committee report, together with all testimony received by the committee. And during the same time period, the governor announced in the media a series of her own meetings to discuss the proposed medical complex. But the committee report, we noted that the transcripts from those meetings, documents presented in those meetings, or the comments made during those proceedings, were not transmitted to the legislature and thus are not included in the legislative record. And no testimony was submitted by the governor on the bill that she requested. The subject property of this bill totals 61 acres and is agriculturally zoned. I just want to note that Matrix's design for all the buildings that they were going to build at Eagles Field, including the 17 acres of flat parking spaces, totaled 38 acres. That's all the buildings and the parking footprint, 38 acres. This bill is a total of 61 acres. The Matrix study ranked this Adakau Crown site behind Eagles Field and EPAU Point, noting that EPAU was preferable for travel distance, proximity to arterial roads, distance from clinics and hospitals, power, water, wastewater, construction costs, land use, zoning compatibility. Adakau Crown lands was preferable under the categories of size, property value, I think it means changes to property value, impact, traffic conditions, and future expansion capability. The bill does not contain the plans for the medical campus at Adakau and property. It only authorizes the Ancestral Lands Commission to lease or sell the property, and as amended by the committee, only allows the Ancestral Lands to lease for up to 50 years. Otherwise, it can continue, it can lease beyond that, or it can sell the property if it discloses the terms to the legislature and gets approval on that. We had requested during the course of these proceedings for any documents that would evidence that the Veterans Affairs Administration, the federal Veterans Affairs Administration, was partnering with Guam to build a facility on this property, or to confirm whether the government of Guam was building a Veterans Affairs facility, or a floor on its own hospital for veterans, or to get confirmation of that. And we really could not get confirmation of any of those. They all seem to be suggestions. Matrix had no details. The only document that we did receive confirms -- sorry. The one document that had been submitted by the governor's community defense liaison office to the Joint Region Marianas was a May 9, 2023 document requesting funding for a VA state home, as this is a potential veterans' project, and that they were requesting federal funding sources. A VA state home, I don't have the definition here, but I think at the hearing, we clarified that that is like a home for persons with disabilities or long-term living who could not take care of themselves. The bill also provides that GIDA will have cognizance or jurisdiction after the Ancestral Lands Commission property is sold or leased to the government of Guam. Coincidentally, GIDA is also the property manager for the Ancestral Lands Commission, who assists the Ancestral Lands Commission in negotiating for its leases to third parties. The bill proposes the sale of the identified lots at fair market value, or the lease at the fair market value. And as noted earlier, the committee amended this bill to approve a lease up to 50 years at a minimum of the fair market value. The Ancestral Lands Commission, in their resolution, have agreed to allow the surveying and appraisal of the properties. The appraisal is being paid, or was the money for the appraisal was transferred to the Ancestral Lands Commission from the governor of Guam, so she's paying for the appraisal that will be used in their negotiations. However, as I said earlier, DPW, as of today, there is no appraisal that has been solicited. The main access to the property discussed in this bill is Route 15 or the back road to Anderson. The Matrix study notes that there is no secondary access to the property. That was one of their concerns. The DLM, the land management director, did testify that there is a proposal to connect Route 15 to Route A through the Adakau Crown lands for a secondary access to the property, but that is not in any document. There was drive time analysis performed by Matrix that shows the drive time to EPAU Point was in a 20-minute range for more of the population than to Adakau Crown by 14,000 people. Almost 3,000 more people will not be served within 30 minutes of Adakau Crown or Edda Agagat than EPAU Point. According to Matrix, time from Melesu, Humatek, or Agat would be over 30 minutes to either location. There was testimony at the hearing from the Inalahan and Melesu mayors and residents that suggested that drive time was shorter to the proposed that suggested that drive time was shorter to the proposed Mangilau site than to the current GMH due to traffic. So again, yes, so I've reached my time. I'm trying to give the facts on the bill for the governor's bill, and so I'm open to any questions if there's anything I can help with. Sido Mas.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else on the main motion on 184? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 184? Senator San Nicholas, I will acknowledge you at this time. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Speaker. This is the governor's bill, right?
Yes, it is, sir.
Yeah, thank you. You know, when I was a...I keep reminding myself about my past, when I was a...oh, first of all, Madam Speaker, if you don't mind, I wanted to say good morning to Caleb. He's in Washington. He's ongoing some chemotherapy, and he sent me a Santa letter. So I'm praying for you out there, son. You come home quickly, get well. Thank you. When I was a kid, I asked my dad, I said, "Dad, why do they call that Guam Memorial Hospital?" And he said, "Well, that's because it belongs to the government." And I scratched my head again, and I said, "Why does the government have a hospital?" He goes, "Because when all the clinics close down, and whatever else places that might help, or people, the hospital is not only our last resort, but, you know, it's our government's duty to take care of its people. And if everybody else closes down, the hospital is all we have." And got me thinking, you know? When I was a, I don't know, when I was a child, I found out that there were two places that interested me the most, and I, for the most part in my life, I ended up working on one of them. I've always had a thing about the hospital and the airport. And, you know, you see how pretty the hospital is? I've always found these two places to be very mystical, where people come into your lives and where people exit your lives. Just for fun, I used to open up the door at the exit at Customs and watch people fall into each other's arms. It's where you meet people. At the hospital, it's another place where people fall into your arms sometimes when they leave you. And so, could you imagine if we gave the hospital the attention we give to the airport? We give, we make the airport so pretty for all our arriving guests, but we don't take care of the hospital enough for our departing and our arriving citizens? The governor, she goes, "Hafadwain, na engin para itaota ta'ota timalago hamzu, man gui She said, "When it comes to our people, why don't you want to dream big?" You know, the governor, in her past, in her time in office, did something for us that I thought I would never live to see. One of it was legalizing cannabis for people like me who suffer from chronic pain. That was amazing. I never thought in a million years, you know, as conservative as I am, I never thought that that'd come to pass. And then she also legalized fireworks, something I thought never would ever come to pass, but she has. And it'd be nice to actually see a brand-new hospital. She actually gave us her, you know, she actually told us that if she would, if we would give her this bill, she would release the funds to get the ball rolling, to get us that new hospital. Last Friday, I was actually at the hospital, and some of the nurses said to me, you know, said, "Thank you for actually listening to us." I was there for a small little procedure. I didn't want to take pictures and post it on Facebook, so I said, probably somebody's gonna say, "Hey, we need to get out the corn soups." I stepped out of a hall now, says San Nicholas. But it was, it caused, it was, it was, you know, just a minor thing, no cause for alarm. But while I was sitting in the hospital ER, you know, I could go to Naval Hospital. I could go to Naval Hospital. But why should I? I wanted to go to our own hospital. And so I ended up there. Everybody was kind of curious to see why Santa was sitting at the emergency room chair there. People kept coming by, wanting to give me a mask, because he didn't want me to catch anything. But I heard from security guards, I heard from nurses, I heard from doctors that were there, and I asked them how true is the condition of our hospital, and they say, "You know, Senator, it's time, we need a new hospital." Then I asked one of my colleagues here a couple months back, I say, I asked, I said, "How long is it gonna take to build a hospital?" And he remarked, "10 years. 10 years before we see a hospital." I had a boss in Customs who would always say funny things like, "Matayu papas, they'll tag in on a..." "I'll die down, and I'll never have tried that." I think it's high time we do something real fast about this and urgently, and get that hospital built. And I think compromising, compromise, is what will get us to that place much quicker than having our egos trample on each other and stall this very, very important thing that we are now trying to embark on. So I asked my colleague support for this new hospital. "Hazi paraun hongi, paraun hongi adzi gubet nota, ni geni halemo, or padi medikus, na engin baba sinan tenya, malago pohatse gui, za otsuli ofisi na'anya, za leknya pohano para sanagu. Hazi pon hongi." Ni da ta'fatsutui hafa para imana'oliki ta'ota, za ni da ta'tuun po'gu na dia, za ta'hatsa adzi hospital para todui ma'itita ta'ota sia. Okoka peti tiu na para be fatsutui esti ita'ota para imana'olik niha, za ni magu niha. Sido Mas, Madam Speaker.
Buen pobetsu, Senator San Nicholas. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion on 184? Anyone wishing to speak on 184? Senator Tom Fisher, I'm gonna recognize you. Good morning. You may proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning to my colleagues and good morning, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the governor's bill. I think it is apparent for anyone, even the most casual reader of the Organic Act, would realize that Congress, through the Organic Act, specifically placed the health care of the people of Guam in the hands of the executive branch. Why? And we all know there are two bills which will be competing. Why the Guam Legislature feels it's appropriate to insert itself in a conversation about the placement of the hospital is inappropriate? The question why we do that is befuddling. All I can say is that this legislature, the 37th Guam Legislature, seems to have some sort of an imperial streak that leads us to believe that we can control every aspect of the executive branch. I suppose it won't be too long before we'll be reaching into the judiciary. This is not our place, colleagues. It is not our place. The governor of Guam, whoever she or he is, or will be, is specifically required to take care of the health of the people of Guam. She, in this case, has made an election, as is her duty, to locate, identify the appropriateness of a place for the new hospital. She has applied her expertise to this question. No one in this body, no one in this room, can say that the governor's selection is arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. It is an absolute function of the executive branch's responsibility and right. This sort of discussion, where we are getting way out of our lane and deciding that we ourselves are going to monopolize, take over, liberate from the governor, the ability to take care of the health of the people of Guam is inorganic, and it's unconstitutional. If we continue on this path, I foresee a time when we, as a body, will be discussing whether or not the governor's choice of a rug color is appropriate. We are inviting ourselves to get so far in...ma'am? We are inviting ourselves along a path where we have no right to tread. The governor has made an election. Again, it is a rational choice. We cannot gainsay it. This is her choice. I think that all of us will adhere, I hope, to, again, our oath, our duty, and legislate. We are not the executive branch. Thank you very much.
Do you have a point of information?
Yes, Speaker, you may state your point of information.
Sido Mas. Yes. As to the imperial streak and outside of our lane, I just want to cite the AG's opinion when we talked about the Eagles Field lease, and some people made that statement. First of all, this land belongs to the Ancestral Lands Commission. They are not authorized to sell it or lease it beyond five years without legislative approval. That is squarely within our lane. And when it comes to building a hospital, the AG opinion on March 31, 2023, said, notably in Berdalio v. Baldwin, "The legislature may, of course, determine whether a hospital shall exist at all, where and how large it shall be, the size and qualifications for appointment to the governing body, and a wide variety of other matters establishing the laws of Guam, subject to which the governor perform his function with respect to the hospital. But it may not negate the command of the Organic Act that the ultimate responsibility for governance of the hospital be in the governor." The AG opinion also states in Berdalio v. Baldwin, this was a 1989 Ninth Circuit case, "The question of whether or not to have a hospital can fall within the purview of the Guam Legislature. Guam Legislature clearly stated in the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Act of 2021, and has earlier created by statute the existing Guam Memorial Hospital Oka Point Tamooning Facility, that the people of Guam shall have its own hospital for their own exclusive use." So it's squarely within our responsibility.
Thank you, Speaker.
Your Honor, or, excuse me, Speaker, point of order?
I will give you the opportunity for your point of order.
Yes, ma'am. I would ask that the body take down those recent remarks. That was no point of information. That was merely advocacy for a position.
Thank you. Duly noted, Senator Fisher. Anybody else on the main motion of Bill 184? Senator Brown, I will recognize you at this time. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning. I was wondering what to say about this bill, but as I listen to some of my colleagues, I guess I'm formulating my thoughts in my mind of what I've been thinking about with this whole issue and debate with regards to the construction of a new hospital, which I've publicly stated over and over again. I have no objection to the construction of a new hospital, or an alternative of how we can upgrade, particularly just the technological needs, you know, and the growth of hospitals that we would certainly need on Guam. But I have to tell you, this whole idea that this whole hospital and the construction of a new hospital is wrapped around the governor of Guam, you know, I don't know if it's our colonial history that makes us kowtow to these type of ideas, but, you know, being one of the senior members of legislature, when we have to be addressing the funding of the hospital, when we are expected by our people to address health care issues as well, I look at our current hospital now and where we're at, and certainly, I think we all know where we'd like to be and what we'd like to see. But we have a total inability, including this current administration, to effectively operate the existing facility that we have. And I think to be of the idea that if we build the walls and the new structure, that miraculously, we're gonna get quality health care. We can't get that now. And we were promised, the people of Guam were promised, let's talk about the election and who got elected, and who wrote on the issue of their background in health care. And look at the budget hearing that I attended for this budget year, when you ask basic questions like, "What do you owe your vendors?" "Oh, we owe our vendors $30 million." Really? All the money floating around that we're bragging about, all the excess revenue. Don't we hear that? That's a new vocabulary word, excess revenue. Look at all the money falling, "Oh, ain't we just grand? Because we're in office, we got all this money." Wow! Boy, the people of Guam have been waiting all these years just for us to arrive, because our magic touch makes it happen. And yet, look at the paper, look at the news. What medications does GMH not have? Shortage or no shortage? Only now, because of actions by this body, really, the leadership had to come out of this body to address the crisis at GMH? Only after did the administration come forward and say, "Hey, we're gonna throw some money in the pot." All this money we've been holding on for so long, while the crisis is before us, while we're still talking about mold, Senator Jesse? I mean, how many months ago did you go up to GMH? After the storm? We can't address the mold. And then, oh my goodness, the air conditioning, half a day. Can you imagine, in your own home, purchasing an air conditioning unit and have it sit in the box? Because I, we didn't get the electrician to assess, or get the wires to connect it? These high-paid administrators, and this is the kind of nonsense, they come before this body and the people to justify their ineffectiveness in properly managing a facility? But no, neither answer to people is, "We're gonna build a new hospital, we're gonna build a whole multi-complex." Let's not kid ourselves. Why is public health in Mangilau sitting up there deteriorating? Only to find out at the public hearing, did the building burn? Was there a fire? We had some smoke. I've been in a, you know, at the port when the building burned, when it was charred, and we had to go in there and clean up and get that building operational again, when every surface had nothing but smoke damage on it, and still operate, and still move, and get it renovated, and get it moving. But we know why it's sitting up there, because, hey, we don't want that operational, because we gotta build a complex down the road, while thousands and thousands and thousands of our people are not getting service, from 13,000 a year to 3,000 only, to have employees from public health coming forth and saying, "Not only do they not have the space to barely operate themselves, they don't even have the space to properly serve their clients, and give them the privacy they need for the medical care that they're seeking." So when you see stuff like this, it's really hard. It's really hard in my mind to understand this big race, that not only do we have to build a hospital, we've gotta build a whole complex, and we gotta build it way up north, away from everybody, at an outrageous amount of infrastructure cost, because we got a vision that will outsurvive this administration. And yet, the key areas where our people should be serviced at the hospital now, and out in the public with public health centers, has deteriorated. Am I making this up, people? For those of you that didn't attend that hearing, that's the reality. And it's not just coming from us, it's coming from the officials that serve in these areas, that work in these areas every day. When we can't do that, and we think, "Oh, only the bigger vision..." When we can't do that and we think, oh, only the bigger vision. Because we're the only ones, like, ah, Dave, that have that big vision. We think big. And if you don't agree with us, you must be thinking very small. When you see and hear this kind of political nonsense that is being brought out here. And then the governor sits up there and wonders why she doesn't have overwhelming support? Why her ideas are not overwhelmingly embraced and loved and cherished? Oh, my God, this is what the governor wants. Let's bend down and kowtow. When we can't deliver now, the record for the administration on healthcare, where are we? Where are we, my dear colleagues? Show me the success stories. Show me what's been improved up there at the hospital. I'm waiting. I'm looking. I'm hoping. Maybe at some point, I got to start dreaming. Because I guess those of us that have a different perspective, oh, we must have very small minds. This is, look at where we're at today with all this excess revenue. What do our people want? They want a good education for their kids. They want to have good healthcare. Gosh, even nowadays, they want to have some sense of safety for themselves and their family. They want to be able to afford to live here. Come on, where are we hitting those marks? Tell me. But we have this vision that if we build this new hospital, oh, my goodness, maybe we'll name it after somebody. Our people miraculously, oh, healthcare is going to be great because we think it's these walls, building new walls, that are going to make the difference. How are we going to pay for it? How are we going to sustain it? How are we going to ensure we have the professional expertise that's going to be working there? And how are we going to ensure they're going to have the equipment and the medicines they need to take care of our people? Where are we with that now, today, in 2024? Where are we? The fact that the Guam Legislature, honestly-- you know, Senator Frank Blas, we had this discussion. Why did we have to initiate that? Why wasn't the administration coming and bringing these issues to light and coming forth saying, hey, we have a crisis situation and this is what we're doing to address it? Can you imagine being a director of a department and being brought down here and literally dragged through the carpet to be told how to run your agency because you consistently are failing? But we want to believe the praises we get. And yet, look at where things are at right now. If we were sailing up there and making sure our people got good healthcare and say, okay, let's kick it to the next level. But we're not even there yet. We're now year six. This is year six. Maybe the first few months, maybe the first year, grace period. Need time. They need time to get grounded, need time to get oriented, need time to take the reins. Six years later. And I've said this before on this floor. Anybody right now could have been the governor of Guam and come out with the outcome that we're seeing at GMH. Anyone could have been the governor of Guam right now and seen the outcome of what we have at Public Health. Where less of our people are getting serviced. And what do we do with the leadership there at Public Health four years ago? Oh, we have some smoke. Did we get the building assessed? Did we get, you know, a master electrician in there and assess the building and determine what needed to be done to correct that issue so it could be safe for everybody? No, what did we do? We abandoned it and we left it there. Did we do anything to ensure that we didn't lose the ability to ensure the programs were still there for our people? Did we go out of our way to get out there in the community and make sure we didn't lose those people? Where are those 10,000 people a year now that are not getting serviced out there, that need that service? That don't have the resources otherwise to get that care or the money to get it? What do we do about that? Now, some people might think, oh, Lana is just being political. Say, eh, we don't like the governor. We don't like the administration because they're the opposite party. Goodness, we have worked over the aisle with many people, Democrat or Republican. I think we all know these are critical issues regardless of our party. You think our people would put up with that? But that's their record. I didn't make it up because, oh, I don't like them. What's better disappointing is the expectation was high. And we were made to expect a lot. And yet, here we are, six years later. And we can't even take care of the basic needs of that hospital. How long ago was a typhoon? I'll tell you, if this was different, if this was a Republican governor up on the hill, every one of you would be up here doing this, if not more. I've seen it. We get rabid and we attack. But in this particular case, the reality is there of what we see. And yet, we try to gloss over all that and pretend it doesn't exist. Because you know what, my people? Don't look here. Because if we build this, look at where we're going to be. If we can't manage and maintain what we have now, how can we expect we're going to get better? At a time when this administration and this leadership will not be in charge? Here and now is what they have to deliver on. And I haven't seen it yet. I had hoped that it would be there because, boy, we needed that leadership and we needed that direction. All the bragging, oh, my goodness, when they sat on the board during the Camacho administration, the hospital got accredited, ambi na? And now that we're in charge of it all, the hospital and the administration, the entire government of Guam, are we any better off? All of a sudden, we don't care what the doctors want. We don't care what the medical field people want here. We're going to decide. But you know what? If we're expected and we're also elected by the people, warts and all, to represent the interests of the public, to ensure that, yeah, you know, if we're going to make these statements or we're going to say we're going to deliver, that we actually can. And that we have the money that our people can afford all the dreams we want to give them. But my dear colleagues, when we can't even see that now at a time when we brag about excess revenue-- and I'll tell you, when it starts sliding down, and it will, how are you going to pay for it all? How are we going to pay for the dream? I think we all want a lot of things, but can you afford it at the end of the day? We can't do it now. We can't do it now. We got all this federal money sitting that we're holding on, that we've been holding on to for how many years now? And all they can produce are press releases and attacks, and press releases, and a little more attacks. I wish they'd take all that effort and put it into tangible improvements and benefits that we could actually see at the hospital. Like get those air conditioners hooked up and get that mold addressed. And make sure your vendors are getting paid so you have a line of credit that your vendors want to deliver the medications that are needed by our people. Gosh, the explanations we get, oh, we just work with other vendors. Really? We got a line of vendors just waiting to stand in line to not get paid? What is, the same old story? Our people deserve better than this. If I thought it would all get resolved by building the new hospital, I'd be like, amen. Why not? Sounds like an easy route and we can all take credit for it. Wow. I think, you know, it's not the talk, it's the doing, it's the action. It's the reality of where we're at. And if they cannot, this administration cannot deliver now when they're at the helm to manage the hospital, manage our public health centers, how are we somehow going to expect that their grand idea of a medical complex that they now want to take ancestral lands to build on is going to miraculously address all our healthcare needs? And that our people should feel safe? It's really hard to buy this story when this is where we're at, unfortunately, Madam Speaker. So with that, I will conclude my comments. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main small motion? Senator Parkinson, I will recognize you at this time. And then Senator Tadegui, did you raise your hand? Okay. Senator Parkinson, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam-- Madam Chair. I've thought long and hard about this hospital business. In my time talking to people just around the island, the sentiment I've seen is that to the average Guamanian, they don't really care where a hospital is built, as long as one is built. And the more I go along this process, the more I share that sentiment. Throughout this process, I have heard three different proposals for how we can address the hospital. First, let's have one in Mangillo. Second, let's have one in Tamooning. And the third, let's buy one from a rich local businessman that already exists and just move in. I think all of those solutions are valid. And I think all of those solutions have problems. That being said, what is plaguing the legislature and the island in general is our refusal to choose. Once we choose one, regardless of the validities or the problems, we deal with it and we handle it and we commit to the process. Because this process is not quick. It is a multi-year process. And by us being hamstrung here for six years now, all we're doing is delaying the start of a lengthy process even more. Of all the three viable solutions, the governor clearly wants Mangillo. And kudos to my colleague, Senator Fisher, for mentioning that this is the call of the executive. He is absolutely correct. And so what we really need to ask ourselves as a body and as a society is, do we want this hospital started in the next two years? Or do we want this started in 2028? Why 2028? Because the gov clearly wants the hospital where she wants it. And if the legislature will not support her in that, then there is no point in these conversations. Let's just pack up this conversation till 2028. Because we're going to have to wait for a new governor. This legislature is going to have to wait for a new governor that comes correct. Otherwise, we are never going to get the hospital built. And if we're going to do that, let's own it. Let's own that we're going to shut down hospital negotiations until we get our way, we get it in Tamooning. Or else we get a new governor that'll give it to us. If that's what we're going to do, fine, then let's do that as a body. But that's not what I choose. I can't wait till 2028. I can't wait till 2026 for a new governor to get elected, to be sworn in in 2027, to fight to get it on the agenda all year. Because, you know, this legislature, nothing ever goes smooth with us. And then, maybe, if this is the best governor we've ever had since sliced bread, maybe it gets on the agenda in 2028. And maybe we just start to get our act together by 2030. That's what we are saying if we reject the governor's proposal. That we are willing to wait until the end of the decade rather than work with her. And if that's what we're doing, let's own that. But I can't wait. I have a baby girl coming. I'd like her to have a hospital. I'd like her to have a hospital as she grows up and not have to be dependent on flying off island for our medical needs. And I'd like everybody's children to not have to fly off island to address their medical needs. Because some people can't. Some people don't have that privilege. And so it is our duty to make sure that they can access those services here at home. And by fighting this, by saying that we know better than the governor, we're going to do the executive branch's job for her, well, all we're just saying is we don't want a hospital till the end of the decade. And so I can't wait. I can't. I'm going to support this bill. I'm going to support any bill that tries to erect a hospital as quickly as possible. And by supporting the governor's bill, I believe that is the quickest way to getting a hospital erected. Yes, there are validities to the governor's plan. Yes, there are huge problems with her plan. But that will be true of any site we select. So let's make a decision. Do we want to build a hospital now? Or do we want to drag our feet as a legislature and wait till the end of the decade? I can't wait. And I hope my colleagues can't wait as well. And with that, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time.
Sizusma, Senator Will Parkinson. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Tadegui, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. You know, first, I want to make sure, Madam Speaker, that it does stay in the record, the comments made by our speaker, Speaker Trelawney, with regards to what she was quoting that was legitimate, a legitimate opinion, that should stay in the record. I just hope, I know you didn't have any objections to that, Madam Speaker, or called that it be strict now. Because the last time I checked, there are three branches in this government. That is recognized in the Organic Act of Guam. Three branches. And they're used for the checks and balances for this government. Checks and balances. Let's remember that. Transparency, accountability. Now, whether we want to work together, those branches of government is another story. Madam Speaker, when I ran in 2018, I ran on the platform of a new hospital. The first legislation I introduced when I was elected in the 35th Guam Legislature was a task force. A task force to look at building a new hospital. A task force to also address the current hospital as we move toward that. The governor didn't want to sign this bill, a simple bill that would actually bring all the stakeholders to the table. Our medical community, this body, the average constituent, the administration, the agencies, all to come together and work on this together. That didn't happen. She decided to do it her way. And for us, we all took the highway, is what she pointed in the direction for everybody else who wanted to be involved. Because they know the importance that it's time to build a new hospital and the time is now. That was in the 35th Guam Legislature, Madam Speaker. But instead, what she does is has her own group of people that she wanted in a task force that didn't include us. But I wasn't going to let that happen. I was going to still be involved. I showed up at those meetings. It was on Zoom during the time. I know that Speaker's office, as a chairman of health, also made an effort to listen in on what was going on. But of course, we were invited to be part of the task force, just to stand in the sidelines and watch. So the people of Guam, this is the kind of governor that we have. The highway or her way or the highway. Making deals with certain-- in this body to get their vote. No matter if it hurts our community or takes the safety away from our children in this community by passing certain laws. Just to win somebody's vote. That's the kind of government, administration, that we're looking at today. Shame. I don't know how many times I've had to say that in the three years that I've been here. Shame on this administration. If you look at the logic of these two bills that we're gonna be heard today, you look at the cost of the government of Guam, the burden, the shouldering of this amount that's gonna be placed on our children, our grandchildren, even our great-grandchildren. That by time we try and pay this off, our hospital, it's already time to build a new hospital. Because it's already showed in the Army Corps of Engineers that hospitals usually only last for about 45 to 50 years before it needs to be major overhaul or a new hospital be made or be built. Here, we're trying to build a century, 21st century healthcare facility. I call it the Taj Mahal. There is no doubt that our people deserve the best healthcare. There is no doubt. We have been working on that for years. But when they say, if we build it, they will come. It's been proven by our own physicians on this island. That's not the case. That is not the case. If we need specialists, we have the opportunity now with technology on telemedicine. But we don't need a Taj Mahal to be able to speak to somebody on telemedicine in elaborate ballroom social hall to get the care we need here. It's the cost, my dear colleagues, the cost. And this is where the checks and balances come into play. Can we afford it? Is it feasible? Every single person on this island, when they look in their checkbook and make any kind of payments at all, they say, okay, can I afford this? I apologize. Forgot to put my ringer on. I'll pay the fine. But can we afford this? Absolutely not right now. We are seeing an exodus, my dear colleagues, an exodus from this island. And if anything that's growing in population here, it's the military. Are they expanding their hospital? Because doggone it, they should. We know they're helping out the VA by renting space over GMRC. They're making efforts. But we need to live within our means, else we will lose everything. How many times have you seen people purchase things they can't afford, later on it's repossessed? Or they put themselves in a predicament where they lose everything? Not just what they purchased, but everything. Do we really want to do this to the next generation? We're not gonna be here in the next five, 10 years. Or maybe some of us will, the younger ones might, others will retire. But it's our responsibility today to be responsible for the sake of all those votes that you received from the people of Guam who entrusted you to make the right decision. Please remember that. It's not, okay, sign my bill and then I'll vote for your bill or make deals on the sideline that has nothing to do for the best interest of this island. Please, people, think of that. Let's also think about ancestral lands. All those individuals that came out here to protest on the Eagles Field. That built and passed, luckily. Now we're looking at Crown's property. The ads, let me tell you one thing. If we sell the land, if ancestral lands sells the lands to the government of Guam, you're looking at about 12 million. They haven't done the appraisals for this, and they're supposed to get two appraisals. About 12 million. If they lease the land based on the appraisal amount in a certain percentage of 8% to 7%, you're looking at 50, 50 years will be $44 million on leasing it. I'm sure this is gonna generate money if they lease it. It's better off to lease it, if you ask me. And I'm sure they're looking at some funds coming in. But I can tell you, every single person whose land was taken away either through the military lands, T-10, airport, lands that were taken away, they want land back. That's more precious to them than a few dollars. Because the roots that were stripped from them can be rebuilt with the family they have today and their children to build roots on land and start again so that someday they can say, we are from Manila. My grandfather got this land. And now my children will have this land. And it'll go on for generations. That's what's more precious to the people is land. And the opportunity for these Crown lands to be put in a lottery instead of getting funding for lands that will never be brought back to them, they have an opportunity to have land. Land, the most precious commodity on this island. And here we are, just ready to take it away and give pennies on the dollar or lease it. And they still have not addressed how these funds will be generated. But I can tell you one thing, the opportunity for putting these Crown lands into a lottery for those people whose land were taken away is, is real. It is an opportunity. Let's not forget that, most important thing of all in deciding on this bill. The last thing is, it may cost the government quite a bit of money. And if you think that, oh, well, we'll just build a hospital first and then later on build a, you know, the behavioral wellness center, the veterans clinic, the, you know, that's not, that's not true. Why are you gonna purchase so much property? If your intentions are not to really build this Taj Mahal of a healthcare facility, we know it's, once it goes this direction, it's gonna happen that way. But did anybody stop to think about the cost of the private sector? The healthcare community that supports the hospital, that takes care of our people? The millions and millions of dollars that were spent in an area to support where the hospital is today? And how much it's gonna cost them to move their facilities? And most especially, how many of them are gonna give up and say, that's it, I'm done? Honey, let's pack up and move, move somewhere else and take my healthcare clinic somewhere else. Sell it off. We stand to lose physicians because of this. I'm hearing already certain buildings are being put up for sale. Certain healthcare facilities are being put up for sale. If this bill does not pass, at least we have a fighting chance to keep what we have here today on our island. So we really, really need to put your conscience into this. And you definitely have to remember why you were voted into this body. The interest of the people of Guam, not just one person who says it's my way or the highway. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator Titekwe. We're gonna have to take a one-minute recess for our audio equipment and then we'll hear from the vice speaker. One-minute recess. We're back from recess. Audio's been fixed. So continuing on Bill 184, the vice speaker, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure. And before I start my official presentation, I just want to note to you and my colleagues for the record that the biasness I have about Guam Memorial Hospital is because I literally was raised there. My mother, the late Ann Munya, literally had more than 60 years at the Guam Memorial Hospital, from its original hospital after the war to, to her death, literally. After working many decades as an employee, rising up to the ranks and even being a chairperson to the Board of Directors of GMH, pastoral care and taking care of the hospital chapel for many, many decades was also in her heart. So I wanted to make sure that I brought that up to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, you know, I've, I've been spending these past several months listening to, to, to our, to our community, to our constituents, and engaging with stakeholders over what is the best plan to move past our current healthcare offerings. Today, the Guam Memorial Hospital is not in the shape to meet our needs. We all know that, let alone our island's needs in the future. We all know the troubles there. The deteriorating facility, the inadequate parking, the constant erosion from salt spray. Today, Madam Speaker, our Public Health and Social Services is decentralized and even years after a fire caused this important government programs to disperse. And just recently, Department of Public Health and Social Services workers testified to this body that their clients are still confused as to where they have been rehoused to. Madam Speaker, colleagues, today our veterans have an inadequate community clinic and a lack of specialty care. Some are waiting weeks to see a doctor. Some wait for months to plan off-island appointments. And despite the best efforts from our hospital and public health staff, despite a lot of empathy from our federal partners, we in government, Madam Speaker, we, we in government need to do better for our island people. And that is where this, Madam Speaker, and another measure on our agenda comes in. To literally determine the way forward. To begin the process that will end in generational change for the better. That answer, Madam Speaker, isn't so easy to determine. As much as we would like to consider only black and white issues, but after countless meetings and conversations, I'd like to share some of the things I'm considering. And I'm thinking of, of course, about the financial requirements of this and the, and the alternative site. But I'm also thinking about what investments will be longer lasting? Which potential dollar used will our island still be benefiting from 10, 20, or 50 years from now? It's obvious that we should consider what proposals are practical needs and which are optional ones. But Madam Speaker, I'm also considering what limitations we always end up settling for and what quality services we deserve. But we never complain about not getting. Colleagues, my colleagues, a good plan might be better in the short term. It may be more affordable. It may be accomplished quicker, quicker, and may, and it may be easier to achieve. But I ask you, but does that mean that our people should be denied a better option?
that mean that our people should be denied a better option or even the best option? Should a reservation to work harder be the reason we settle on a solution with no potential for growth? Should we settle for a cheaper solution because it would be easier to find the funding for it? Should we choose a site that can address one of our health care problems at the expense of the others? For me, Madam Speaker, even if it may be hard for all to understand, I am leaning toward a more hopeful, a more complete solution. Yes, it may require tough work. We may need to be more diligent in our oversight. And I'm confident, I am confident that this body has shown it does not shy away from hard work. And we will actively, actively watch over this government to better inform the public of its actions. There's a future that we can live in if we allow our government to plan for a medical campus. It is one where primary, urgent, and emergency health care are all in close proximity. It's a future with room to grow, to meet needs we can't foresee, to take advantage of opportunities that we won't predict. This health care complex won't be finished, Madam Speaker, under this governor. The full expansion won't be finished under the next governor. And there will probably be more room for the governor after that to bring their own executive influence to this site. So my support for this measure is not tied to any support for this administration or any MAGA haga. It's because in my heart, truly, Madam Speaker, I think it's the strategy that we need for the future. And when done right, it will result in the quality of health care our people deserve. I know there is a competing measure on this agenda. And I'm asking my colleagues to at least allow this bill or both bills a full up and down vote at the end of the session. And before I end, Madam Speaker, I did have a question for the Oversight Chair, and I don't know if it's you or it has to do with Ancestral Lands Commission. And if I can state the question first, Madam Speaker, when the last time the Ancestral Lands Commission earned revenue through a lease, you know, when was the last time the Ancestral Lands Commission earned revenue through a lease or sell of property in their inventory? And how much is currently available to compensate those eligible for aid through the Guam Ancestral Land Commission?
Sidos Massey, Vice Speaker. Speaker Trelawny, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I would yield to that question as the Oversight Chair of Ancestral Lands. We did have an oversight hearing of the Ancestral Lands Commission on one of the days that we had a hearing on this bill so that we could flush that out. And so they testified, they, they are actually not authorized by law to sell any of their property. So they have been authorized to lease and they are under current leases. I think you read in the newspaper, they're actually owed for some of their current leases in the millions of dollars. However, they do have 11 million in the land bank, it's called. That's their cash inventory. That's the money that if that's that will be distributed together with any money that they receive according to this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, if I may, maybe just, just for perspective and, and to be inclusive and bring parity across for everything that has happened in the past, I would like to make a motion at this time, just so the public can be made aware of our respective records. In a session convened by this body in September of 2021, the Guam Legislature voted unanimously to authorize $600 million to build a health care center. And to be clear, this law, codified as Public Law 36-56, calls for the construction of a health care campus, a plan intended, according to the legislature, to include all health care agencies of this government. That includes all the health care agencies in the government of Guam. So of course, GMH, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and Behavior of Health. And I just think, Mr. Speaker, that it is appropriate and fair for our people to know that the members still serving in this body voted for this vision or for a vision. And, and so I just, for, for record sake, I move for bill 126-36, and I know I'm correct because I had my staff research it, be appended to the digest for this bill, only to give the perspective of what was voted. And, and it can be done. So it's just a motion to append that public law, that codification to this bill for record. So there's a motion. I know it's not debatable, but I'm asking that it be, be appended to the, the record, if it's okay. And then, then I will close and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Sidos Massey, Vice Speaker. On the motion to append bill 126-36?
No, 12, let me, let me get it right. So it is 12, it's 121-36. It's the 36 Guam Legislature because we're in the 37th.
On the motion to add bill 121-36, you don't want to add the public law?
No, no, yeah, but it was codified, but it was, so I just wanted to append it for the record.
So on the motion, is there any objection?
To the journal.
The public law or the bill, Vice Speaker?
We can have legal do the technical corrections to make sure that it's the right journal, the right, the right bill. But it is 121-36, and, and it was unanimously passed and voted
you are recognized.
on.
Let's take a moment's recess for some clarification. We're back. So again, the motion, Vice Speaker, did you want to restate your motion?
To clarify, to be clear, the voting record, Madam Speaker, to be fair, the voting record of 121-36.
On the motion to append the committee report for bill 184-37 with the voting record for bill 121-36, is there any objection? Append it to the committee report for bill 184-37. So again, the motion, colleagues, is to append the committee report for the bill we're currently discussing.
No, the voting sheet, the voting record.
Yes, so we're gonna, but we're gonna add the voting sheet to the committee report for this bill.
Yes, sir, the voting sheet. Thanks.
On the motion, is there any objection? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. Vice Speaker, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And again, we have to make the tough decisions. Madam Speaker, me, Mr. Speaker, I was in Puerto Rico looking at a veterans' hospital that was built in 1968. And when I saw it, I was in awe of how brand new it still looked. And the veterans' hospital that, that the Veterans Affairs built, the new one, 10 years ago, and both of them still look brand new. And I know that that's an, may be a far dream to reach, but I know that if we collaboratively work together and look at the intent of what we did, even in previous legislatures, I think that, that, that we can accomplish this building of a hospital for our people of Guam. Maybe not, hopefully, before the end of my lifetime. So Sidos Massey, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure 184. Sina Massey.
Sidos Massey, Vice Speaker. On the main motion, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the main motion? On the main motion, colleagues, anyone else wishing to speak on the bill? Going once. On the main motion, anybody wishing to speak on the bill? Again, if there's no one who wishes to speak on the main motion, I'll turn it over to the Speaker for the close. On the main motion, no one wishes to speak? Okay, Speaker Trelawny, you're recognized.
Thank you again to all my colleagues for the debate on the bill. And I think this is the goal of what we're going to do on both of these bills is we're just going to have to do our jobs. And I want to commend those who believe that this is their job, to be here, lay out the facts, do cost benefit analysis, listen to testimony, and weigh the decisions that the people of Guam are counting on us. They're not looking to us to hide our heads in the sand and close our eyes and say, whatever you say, we will do. That's not how this is supposed to work. We are a legislature. And I really wonder, what are we doing here if it's not in the authority of the legislature? Even the governor recognizes she cannot take land out of the ancestral land bank. That would violate law. Even she recognizes if she wants to take land out of the Chamor Land Trust, she needs legislative approval. If she wants to do a lease over five years, she needs legislative approval. So thank you to my colleagues who recognize that this is how we work together. We work together by doing our job to its fullest. And we represent those people who are counting on us to do just that. As Chair of the Committee on Health and Land, I concur 100% that a hospital, a new hospital is urgent. We ruled out long ago trying to rebuild the current building, and we were going to build new. That's a consensus in our community that we should celebrate. We all agree. And so for any senator in here to imply that somebody wants to take long, I think they're ignorant. Where were they when we were voting to finance in the billion dollars worth of financing or more for a new hospital? And we allowed leaseback on the land and other options on government land. That was back in 2019. And what I would have, and we even set up a committee, as one of my colleagues referenced, a committee, so that that process, our billion-dollar new hospital would be transparent. That's all we asked. We gave the land, the authority, the financing. But that's not what happened. The committee met a couple times and then decided not to meet anymore. So all the other decisions were not made by a committee. They were made by different individuals. And that's why the hearing process was quite difficult. Because we had some things not in writing anywhere, even to this day, how the decisions were made. So I am here trying to be objective, and I tried to be objective through this whole process. But what I would really appreciate it was full transparency. But instead of full disclosure, there were separate meetings with speculation in many instances, not part of the public record that we are going to rely on, or we are called by our duty to rely on public record in making our decisions. That's what I'm going to base my decisions on, the facts as I can detect them, and the places where there are no real facts. One of the most disappointing admissions in this process was by the GMH Facilities Manager, who was elevated to Operations Manager or another position by the governor. And when we asked him, why have you not taken care of these CIP projects since we were talking about them in 2018 or 2019 until now? And he said, because we were concentrating on the new hospital. And they want to talk about dreams. Well, do we have to dream in order to get our current hospital to operate efficiently, to be repaired for the next five years, as was already told us by Army Corps? While we build a new hospital, can we do both? Can we, the government of Guam, do both at the same time? That was the mandate. That was the expectation, that the fiscal teams, all the PR teams, all the management teams, we're going to focus on the current hospital and build a new hospital. There's no reason we can't do that. We've received inconsistencies in testimony compared to the Matrix Study, which you hear me cite a lot because it's one of the few documents we actually have where facts are laid out as opposed to speculation. And then, so some of the testimony that we have received from the agencies is contradictory to the Matrix Study. That's one of the things that happened during these hearings. Another thing that happened was some of the testimony completely changed from one hearing to another, or one public out there meeting to what we hear in here. That's another thing we had to deal with. And some things were just never disclosed. And some things were just never disclosed. But I am doing my best, and I am so grateful to my colleagues who come in here and do their best to work with the governor to build a new hospital, to lay out the facts, to do the cost-benefit analysis, to authorize land transfers legally, who attend the hearings, listen to all the testimony, read the committee reports, read the Matrix Studies. It's not us who's been dragging our feet since 2019. And I believe that we can proceed to build this hospital with our current governor. I want to see that happen, and I think it should happen. There should be no excuse why it should not happen. But the facts show us that it's going to take maybe three years for infrastructure alone. Army Corps estimated the construction of a new hospital is going to take at least five years, at least, after infrastructure is addressed. So we should begin, we should begin after this session. And I believe, as one of my colleagues stated earlier, there is no perfect decision, because there may be issues with both properties, but we're going to do the best that we can. We're going to make the best decision we can based on the facts that are before us, based on what we know, what we could gather, and based on who we represent, the people of Guam. So thank you again to my colleagues, and thank you for the hard decision that you're going to have to make on this bill. Si tu es masi.
Madam Speaker, are you going to move the bill?
Sure, I already did, but I'll repeat my motion to move the bill to the third reading.
On that motion, to put it in the third reading voting pile, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. We are now on Bill 185. We are now on Bill 185. Senator Chris Barnett, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion to place Bill Number 185-37 LS, introduced by myself, Senator Chris Barnett, and act to add a new subsection 83, 117, Chapter 83, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring any new hospital constructed pursuant to the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Act of 2021, to be constructed on Lot 5173-1-R2-New-R7, Lot 5173-1-R2-New-7, and Lot Number 5173-1-R2-New-6 in the municipality of Timoting. And I'd like to discuss the measure, ma'am?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning to my colleagues and to the people of Guam who are watching this very important and historic session. The debate has been very hot this morning, so hot that our fire alarm just went off a few minutes ago, and I honestly didn't think that this day would come so soon. I remember last year when the governor's measure was introduced, and we were recently called out by the administration in an interview that said there was no action taken on the governor's bill, which we just discussed, but I beg to differ, because we attended so many hearings on this issue of the construction of a new hospital. And so there has been action, and the people of Guam want to see more action. People I talked to are tired of us talking about this issue, so I just ask my colleagues that we discuss and debate this measure, we vote all, all the bills up and down, and move forward. The bill, let me just go over what the bill does. There are some good amendments in the committee. The bill obviously mandates that we build at Epaupoint, and it also authorizes the governor to enter negotiations with the Chamor Land Trust for the sale or lease of these lots, which, all three lots total 38 acres. There's also, it was amended in committee, Section 4, compatibility and efficiency with adjacent facilities. The hospital and any other healthcare facility shall be built and designed to complement the reverence of the Naftan Manenata Shrine authorized in Public Law 33-204, and to incorporate patients' access to the healing cliffline view as intended by the original landowners, the Francisco D. Perez family. I know there was a press release that had come out of Adaloupe last night at 8:00 PM that alluded to the possibility that constructing the new hospital at Epaupoint would somehow jeopardize the Naftan Shrine, that would, it would somehow jeopardize the Saginaw Koutour and Chamor, and I beg to differ with all due respect. The Naftan Shrine is, it's enshrined in law, and it's safe. And on the subject of Saginaw Koutour and Chamor, the bill was also amended to add a new Section 5. Design and construction of the new hospital shall include construction of water, power, sewer, and telecommunications. Power to the people at the Chamor Cultural Center, Saginaw Koutour and Chamor. So that's what the bill does. And I just want to go over, there's a whole lot has happened since we started discussing this issue, and a whole lot of attacks have been levied. We have been called not visionary. In a interview with KUAM News just a few weeks ago, the governor's spokesperson quoted, "I want to encourage the people of Guam. I want to encourage the members of the 37 Guam Legislature to stop being short-sighted, to think beyond today's needs. I don't think it's fair for them to call us short-sighted when they are blind to the problems of today." They also say, "We can't build at Epaupoint because there's no room for expansion. It's too small," they say. Again, I respectfully beg to differ. GRMC is built on 7.9 acres. Over in Hawaii, as we heard in testimony on this bill, the Kapialani Women's and Children's Hospital sits on 4.8 acres, and they're currently expanding to 250 beds and 300 parking slots. The Honolulu Medical Center sits on five acres. The current Guam Memorial Hospital footprint is five acres. And so again, when they say there's no room for expansion, I respectfully disagree, and I'll tell you what our people think. Our people don't think we should be in the expansion business. When we can't even handle the basic healthcare needs of our island, it's tragic, it's disappointing, it's heartbreaking that we were told that if we elect a nurse, our healthcare troubles would disappear, and they've only gotten worse. There are some in our body who argue that we're stepping on the governor's toes, we're stealing our authority, we're driving outside of our lane. They argue that the Organic Act gives the governor the authority to care for our healthcare, and unfortunately, the governor, the lieutenant governor, have failed in that responsibility. Some of my colleagues have argued here today that maybe we need a new governor. I would counter, maybe we need new senators, because some of the senators we have in this body know how they're going to vote before they even see the bill, and that doesn't benefit the people of Guam. They also say that Epaupoint is too small because our population is growing. That just doesn't make sense to me, because we all, we have had many friends and family leave our island, leave their home, to seek better opportunities elsewhere, because our government has failed to deliver those opportunities to our people right here at home. So when the administration says the population is growing, I wonder which population are they talking about? Because the only population that's growing, that's going to be growing, is the military population, and the civilian population associated with the military buildup. And I understand what the governor's trying to do with the medical complex, I commend her for her efforts, but there's just too much uncertainty. There's a lack of clarity. We met with the governor last year in good faith, because I wanted to hear more information. Sadly, we didn't get that information, but what we did get was the governor telling us that no matter where we build the new hospital, no matter where we build the medical complex, the federal funding will follow. Some have said Chamoros can dream. You can dream big, but our people are dreaming right now because our healthcare reality is a nightmare. And that's the truth. They say, "Don't build in Timoting because it's too congested." But the Matrix Study shows that the Epaupoint site is accessible from multiple points. The Matrix Study shows that the Epaupoint site will serve more of our population than the governor's proposed location. Our healthcare is in a state of emergency. I believe building at Epaupoint is the quickest, most prudent way to meet our people's desperate healthcare needs. We know the state of the Guam Memorial Hospital. There's a press release that had come out of Adaloupe last night again that, that asked the question, "Why should we limit ourselves? Why should we limit ourselves?" This is what our people are saying about limiting ourselves. Our people out there are saying, "We can't even manage and maintain the Guam Memorial Hospital," and yet we are asking for their permission to build a billion-dollar medical complex out in the middle of Back Road. And it's not about limiting ourselves, it's about making sure we deal with what's on our plate. And so when we talk about dreaming big, we have to be careful to make sure that our head doesn't stay in the clouds. It's going to be cheaper to build at Epaupoint, and one of my colleagues had argued today that cheaper isn't always better, but while building at Attacau will require $100 million of precious ARP funds, building at Epaupoint requires an infrastructure upgrade to already existing power, water, and sewer in the area, and that upgrade will only cost us $26 million. Some Southerners have expressed support for the Edagaga proposal, but again, I'm going to say that these same Southerners who are crying for improvements in healthcare are the same people who have been let down by this administration. You cannot tell, rather, you should not tell the people in the South that you're going to build a hospital for them that's on the back road to Jigo. That's like me telling the people of Jotni that I'm going to build them something for them up in Dedito. It just doesn't make sense, especially when we have failed to invest in the healthcare facilities that serve the people of the South that are actually located in the South. And those are the improvements that this body is dedicated to deliver. We have legislation in the works, we've had hearings on these public health community centers. I don't know what we're going to do here today. I don't know if we're going to pass both of these measures, or I don't know if both of them are going to fail to pass. But whatever happens, as long as we do our job, I think we can move forward as a body. And so, as I've always said, the facts favor Epaup. While we have looked for facts concerning Edagaga, unfortunately, those facts have been slow to know in coming. And so when it comes to making an informed decision, I think we have the information about the Epaupoint location in front of us, and they have tried everything to discredit this location that the Matrix Study said was the highest-rated location outside of Eagle's Field. They said there's billions of little fire ants. They said there was a fault line. They produced a hastily-received letter from a bond council that said financing would be difficult to maintain, but the Chamor Land Trust had told us in previous hearings that they wanted to lease this property commercially. And so something's not right here. And so if we move forward with this bill and we do build at Epaupoint, I think we're going to see a lot of these issues disappear, like the little fire ants. We are testimony that there were billions upon billions of little fire ants, and we brought the guy in from Department of Agriculture, and he said, "Hey, you know what happens to little fire ants? At a construction site, when you clear everything and you construct, they disappear." So that wasn't an issue. And the fault line was never an issue until we started discussing the viability of Epaupoint as a location. And so whatever happens today, whatever we decide about the future of our people's healthcare, I just hope that we get the support from the administration to move forward on it. Three years to put in infrastructure at Attacau, and when you look at what the governor said on the record about the funding, we don't know where she's getting the money. Is it from DOD? Is it from Congress? When we're talking about $800 million, I think that's going to take an act of Congress. And that means we could be eight to 10 years away from completing construction at Attacau. And I believe that we can build faster at Epaup, we can build better, and we could deliver our people's future healthcare needs much sooner than any other location. And so my colleagues, I ask for your support on this measure. Si tu es masi, Madam Speaker.
Si tu es masi, Senator Barnett. On Bill 185, oh, I'm sorry, audio didn't bring to my attention. They are continuing to have some issues with our audio, so I'm gonna, we're gonna take a break for lunch and allow them to fix it, hopefully, once and for all. So we'll, we'll take a recess. Is there any objection to coming back about 1:30? Until 1:30? Recession until 1:30. Si tu es masi.